That's what happens in...
Save up.
Who's supposed to be the...
(coughs)
Mm-hmm.
(noise)
Oh.
Just saying.
I think Weir, Inker Church, is here.
(coughs)
(coughs)
That's bad.
I don't know if that...
I like to see the...
(coughs)
What's that?
Safety Harbor.
Yeah.
It's on the internet.
That's a pretty case.
Sure thing.
Personal one, not city one.
So, we're going to...
Hold here.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
My name is...
This is...
Well, not worse.
(coughs) Ready, Carlos?
(laughing)
A short agenda, we got... We got nowhere to be.
He almost made me fart.
He's done that joke, it's a recycled joke, it's no longer fun.
It gets me every time, it's so funny. Oh.
All right, good evening, everybody, welcome to the City Commission meeting of Monday, November 20th. At this time, I don't think I see him, but I'm gonna call Pastor Mark Weir from Inker Church of Safety Harbor to come forward. Nope, that's not him, all right. So if everyone would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge to the Flag, Andrea Norwood's gonna lead us in the invocation.
Mayor, let us pray. As the City Commission gathers this evening, we pray that we are ever mindful of the opportunities to render our services to the residents and citizens of Safety Harbor. Always keep in mind the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make Safety Harbor a better city to live, work, and play. Accept our thanks for this day and all of its blessings. Bless those who have joined us this evening. Guide and direct the City, Safety Harbor City Commission and their actions this evening. Grant that each of us may feel our responsibility to the Sa- City of Safety Harbor. In the name we pray, amen.
Thank you.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Norwood.
Thanks.
All right, so we have no presentations tonight, so we're gonna move to audience to be heard. So if there's anyone from the audience that wishes to be heard on an item that's not on the regular agenda or that's on the consent agenda, please come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to address the commission.
As most of you know, my name is Ray Duke, I reside at 170 Irwin Street, Safety Harbor. I'm here tonight to talk to you about our fire department. As most of you probably know, I worked for the Safety Harbor Fire Department for 34 years and retired as a district chief. I worked, I would like to shed some light on your safety as well as the well-being and working conditions of our firefighters. As you know, several firefighter paramedics have left the department and are now working other departments mainly due to pay. It takes years to train a firefighter and paramedic, so we're receiving much less experience in return. The pay is probably the main reason they were unable to recruit more experienced firefighters. And while the pay may be a factor in current staffing, it was the blatant disregard of concerns from Chief Stefanic that pushed them out the door with an attitude of, they're bluffing, and then, well, if they wanna leave, then let them leave. The fire department has several more individuals that are seeking employment at other departments. Even though some of these issues with pay are being addressed, these people no longer feel that chief has their best interest or the citizens' best interest at heart. Our firefighters take pride and ownership in their job, the department, and the community that they serve, so they think you should know about the chief's leadership or lack thereof. The firefighter's mantra is to protect life, property, and the environment, in that order. Would, what would you say if I told you that the chief directed his DCs, his district chiefs, not to respond to cardiac arrest, even if it's a pediatric? Or, he's allowed brand-new probationary firefighters to be paired with one paramedic on a two-person med unit. He's reduced service from a four-man truck company to a three-man truck company, which reduces rescue capabilities at fire medical calls. When this happened, he did not provide counter-education to the commission, nor did he ask for stakeholder public input. Some of these issues may be because he never worked on a fire apparatus in Pinellas County or even the state of Florida. I know you're aware that six employees have separated employment from the city in the last few months, but did you realize about 16, 1-6, total resignations have occurred in his employment of five-and-a-half years? In contrast, the previous fire chief of 10 years had two resignations due to discipline and two employees not past probation. Furthermore, for the last two district chief promotional opportunities, there were no internal applica- applications even though there were qualified individuals. This speaks volume to the leadership of the department. Firefighting is a different job from your typical nine-to-five job. These people spend 24 hours every third day or one-third of their adult working life together. They have to have trust in each other and their leadership. Right now, they are simply afraid for their jobs, afraid for their families, and afraid for their well-being. I beg you to please do the right thing and put a chief in the fire department so that it can once again be a safe place and a great fire department. If any of you wish to sit and talk with me, I will make myself available at any time. Thank you.
Mr., just one question for you. I know you've been retired for a few years, and you're privy to a lot of inside information. How are you getting all that information?
I'm very tight with the fire department. If you've known me more than 30 seconds, you know that my heart and soul is in this fire department.
Okay.
Um, I've known these guys, some of these guys I've known since they were teenagers, literally teenagers, because they came here as fire explorers. I was the chief advisor, and I took them from fire explorer all the way through, talked to them, mentored them, had other mentor people that mentored them to, to the point to where they are today. So I'm very tight with all of the guys and gals with this fire department. That's how I'm privy to some of this information.
Thank you. All right, so there's obviously a lot of communication still going on, but okay.
Of course.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else wish to be heard? All right, all right, guys, guys, can we not do the clapping after every person? We'll just keep things moving. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Liz, 1207 Willowick Circle. On Saturday, I heard the mayor say that our firefighters had the best equipment. It made me think about the fire trucks and Santa Tors. I noticed the ladder truck has not been at Station 53, and when I spoke to a union member, I found it has been sitting at the shop since September 22nd because they are short-staffed. I was surprised they would let it go two months and not look for another mechanic shop to fix it. I asked if it was more expensive to send somewhere else and was told that it was an older ladder truck and has been in service for more than 10 years with over 100,000 miles. Apparently, a new ladder truck was ordered, but its replacements won't be here for more than a year because of backup orders. I asked how you would know, how you know when to order a new truck, and was told that the fire department had a replacement plan, but the chief chose to delay it. Okay, so the ladder truck is out, the new one is on its way, are you using something just as equivalent? I heard it's a newer engine, but it can't reach tall buildings like the ladder truck. The radiator hose blew on a fire call, the driver's seat belt sensor doesn't work and beeps constantly, plus a broken passenger mirror. I was appalled to hear this. Are we a city that needs our neighbors to rescue us? Why isn't it a top priority to get the ladder truck and engine working? I'd asked the fire chief about it, but he seems to be absent recently. I also heard at the commission meeting when discussing pay at the department, the union president had to step up because the chief didn't speak for his people. The National Society of Executive Fire Officers states, "Character is not necessarily defined by how a person behaves when conditions are optimal and life is good. It is easy to take the high road when the path is paved and obstacles are few or nonexistent." Character is also defined by decisions made under pressure, when no one is looking, when the road contains landmines, and the way is obscured. I've seen the post on Safety Harbor strong. I'm seeing a lack of action, poor planning with the fire trucks and staffing. I don't mean to air any dirty laundry, but it seems like no action has been taken internally. Is this what the shi- city should expect? That during a crisis, our city emergency manager leaves town and avoids the uncomfortable conversations when the going gets tough?
Can you just state your last name for the record?
Bill Rock. Thank you.
Guys, guys, Anthony, can we not do this after every person, please? All right, next person, please.
Inco, 605 Avenue South. Couple of things that I wanted to just bring up. I didn't realize about the fire truck, um, I know it takes more time to order those type of trucks, um, and there's not a lot of companies that make them. But I do have some issues with the fact that pretty much every time I come to this meeting, we're ordering either a van, or a truck, or the workers and the utilities, et cetera. And when I drive around here at the city and public works, I see that we have a lot of trucks. And I guess, I'm just wondering, how many trucks do we really need? And what's going on with the turnover of the trucks and things like that? So, that's one thing. The other thing I wanted to, to add or bring up to the fire side is, because some of you have... Your leader is a recording. Okay? I'm a leader, I work for many organizations, unions are represented by their union, okay? Management is there to ensure everything goes appropriately. Saying we're, um, your fire chief is not covering your backs is not necessarily appropriate thing. Because of that, that, your fire chief works for the city, okay? You guys are all in a union. That supports you. So, you need to understand that, be clear on that. And, you know, over the weekend, I read a lot of posts, and some of the posts were saying that you didn't get enough money and things like that. Your union negotiates your contract. So if you didn't like what your union was negotiating, you shouldn't have signed or agreed to.
I would love to have a copy of you explaining what's going on.
Okay, then you need to get a new union.
No, that's not...
All right, Susan, Susan, let's just, can we keep the, we can't, they need to come up if they wanna speak.
So, so, yeah, I'd love to talk to you too.
If we could just, yeah.
So...
Can we? All right, thank you.
I'm not talking to you.
All right, time out. She's allowed to address whoever she wants. She can look back, she can look forward. Anyone in the audience will have a chance to be heard, so let's just keep things moving, but, thank you, duck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
You know, I'm just gonna address what, you know, has been said here tonight. You know, we're aware that we've been having some turnover in the, and I'll open up to the commission in case they wanna chime in, but we're all aware that we've lost six people in the fire department. We're aware that there is a national and state-level trend where this is going on right now. We've, you know, listened, we always have an open dialogue with the union to hear their concerns. I've met personally with several peoples of the, several representatives of the union recently, and I've always been available throughout the years, as all of us have been. We took your concerns to heart when you told us that pay was the big issue happening in the city, and I think to a lot of our credit, we decided to address that outside of the contract that had been fairly negotiated. And we had trusted it, we negotiated pay raises, 6% for a lot of people, 12% for people at the men's or maxes, in good faith, we gave those to you. That's what was requested by the union president, and that's what was communicated to us that was gonna address these problems. Same six people left. Didn't save anyone. I held a town hall meeting on Saturday, Tom Peters came, he said, "Well, you know, we understand that, but, you know, we did save three other people from leaving," so it's getting kinda hard to quantify what was promised to us or suggested to us and what was actually delivered. And, so I gotta tell you, from my perspective, it's disappointing and disheartening that we went through that whole thing, we've been working in good faith with the fire union. And after we did that, you guys committed to us to work with us in a partnership moving forward, which was good to hear, 'cause I think all of us are trying to work in good faith with the fire union. So, literally, that was the last meeting where we gave the raises, and now the very next meeting, just a couple weeks later, you guys are coming and telling us, "Well, the reason is, uh, you know, issues with the fire chief," and, you know, Ray Duke outlined several of these issues, and, you know, Liz outlined issues with equipment, and, but none of these issues were brought to us beforehand, before we negotiated the amended and new contract. So, I'm kinda scratching my head, saying, "Well, you know, what is this all about, then? Why, like, why, why, if this was the focus, why would you not have brought these issues to us to begin with? And why are we doing all this in public right now when we're already, like, I, I, from what I understand, there's already been conversations with several of the people of the union and commissioners explaining this to us? I said it publicly at the town hall meeting. It's been communicated through our city manager that we are happy to work through these issues and address them." So I'm not sure what the point of everyone coming out in force and, you know, tell, you know, basically, to me, it sounds like, according to Mr. Duke, replacing the fire chief, which I gotta say is a pretty bold move, asking to replace the fire chief of the city, I mean, I know for a fact the city manager's asked representatives of the, of the union to say, "Give me a list of the things that you are upset with," and that list has not been documented in writing, we haven't got that yet. I don't know why we couldn't work in good faith, the way we did with these raises, to address issues, morale issues, and issues with, call it leadership style, um, the same way we did with the, the same way we did with the raises. I think calling for the fire chief to be replaced is a pretty bold move. I'm disheartened by it, and, you know, I mean, all I can say is, the city management has committed to the fire union to work with them, to sit down, to go over these issues, and to address them. It sounds like to me, the only option that the union is open to is replacing the fire chief. And if that's the case, I don't know what path that leaves moving forward, but I can tell you, from the city's point of view, the city is willing to work through those issues. And I hope the fire union will commit to being a good partner, or recommit to being a good partner, as you did last meeting, when we were discussing the raises to address these issues and work through them, rather than to give an ultimatum. So, that's, um, those are my feelings. I, I can open it up if anyone else wishes to chime in, or we can move on.
I'd like to say something. Yeah, last, a couple weeks ago, we agreed to opening up the books again, you know, with the, with the agreement, which we didn't have to do. We recognize the fact that you guys were not being, you know, the pay in Safety Harbor was not up to par with what was being given in Safe, in Palm Harbor and, and the local communities, and we went ahead and made an adjustment, and we feel it was a very, very equitable, nice adjustment we made. Some of it was to keep the younger, the young kids that were leaving, the younger employees or firemen that were leaving, of course, didn't work at all, they still left. Right? Regardless of that, right, it doesn't matter, right? You guys deserve it, you guys need to be paid just as much as the people in Palm Harbor and Eastlake, whatever, whatever it is. Thought it was, we thought this, this was, this was a big issue, right? The pay was a big issue. Few days later, we find out that it's not the issue. The issue is that there's turmoil, right? Turmoil between management and the fire department, right? And now things, so, I came up with an idea, hey, talking to, talking to the union, let's get together, let's get to a mutual understanding, right? And it was really, you know, there was really no, no, there was really no positive answer. You know, all of a sudden, social media blew up, you know, accusations, this, you don't do that in social media. Josh Stan- Stefanic is, is our chief, and he's, he's got a family too. Now, maybe he is at fault, maybe he's not at fault, right? But how would you feel for everybody to come and attack you, or you, directly? Right? You don't do it that way. There is a process. There is an agreement between the city and the union. It should be addressed with the uni, between the union and, and the city. Now, I volunteered, I, I personally volunteered, right, in my talks, that I would sit down and I will, between the chief and the union, and kick things off, right? Kick things off, to see if we can come to a mutual understanding, right? First of all. I'm also not convinced that this is all the chief's problems. I talked to some of the people that left, and I'm not convinced that he is the issue. Now, perhaps there's some misunderstanding here, perhaps there's, there's a little bit of a culture clash here, which we need to figure out, right? But he is not 100% the problem. According to, according to the information that I got. And I'm telling you that, I'm no expert at this, at this stuff, but I've got a little bit of experience, I wasn't just born yesterday. So, I'm asking you all, let's, let's deal with this in a proper way, right? Whoever wants my phone number can call me up, whatever, I am open. I wanna fix this. I care for you guys, I care for this city, right? And I, I want this thing to work out right.
Professor Susan, I'd also like to speak. I have great regard for many of you, for most of you, and it's not a political thing because, in most instances, I have not gained the union's support when I have run for this seat lately. I think it's since Chris died, I have been rejected. So, I'm saying this from the heart that I still respect you, and when you reach out, I still meet with you. And I've met with Rick, and I've met with Anthony, and I met with firefighter, Arissa, Brendan. And I feel, I'm sitting up here, and I'm just still in shock because I heard about the social media firestorm through somebody, just who called me and said, "Did you see this?" "I didn't see it, I take care of my mother, I'm not on social media, I don't like social media, except for posting pictures of mom and the cat." So, I was just really shocked and appalled and awed because I thought, "Really, Rick? Really, Anthony? You didn't say this to me when we met." And I'll take it a little step further. I have a supporter who read a letter to us and asked for a pay increase, and he and I had some words because he was saying things about chief not standing up, and I said to him, "You just have to listen to me, we have to talk, but I'm not the Texans been liberal, we really just need to jaw this over because I'm, I'm conservative when it comes to money and fiscal policies." So, anyway, we really had words, and I was baffled. I thought, "How does my friend know about chief?" And I believe it's either social media gossip, or it's gossip about town, somebody's talking, telling inside stories that are your stories, that I feel should be shared with HR, should be shared with chief, should be shared. But I understand also about fear of retaliation, because I've been there, and I've been through that at work. And just, I left my teaching job early because I had a supervisor with whom I didn't see eye to eye, and I thought, "You know what, it's time for me to go because you're the boss." And so, close to retirement, I got out. So I understand, because I did feel that heavy pressure too. I felt like somebody was out to get me. But these are things that I agree with Commissioner Diaz, you need to have discussions, you need to talk about this, and there needs to be some sort of mediation. And lately, seriously, especially today, I just feel very sad. I just feel sad about this, about chief has to go, and I'm thinking, "Wow, I, it's a blind side, that's what it is to me." So thank you for listening to me. And again, I also care about you, but I'm very puzzled. There was one more thing I wanted to say, Rick, I complimented you about the negotiation over the pay, and I really leaned on Commissioner Murray, so I was really needling him publicly, but thinking, "Come on, good faith, go for this raise." But I have to say to you, I didn't care for everybody being arrayed across the back, that was one of the arguments I had with my friend. I said, "Hey, I talked, there were hours and hours of meetings, we met in here, we met privately, what was that, that final step of the people across the back?" And my friend argued, "Well, that's the men supporting their guys, but they were already supported because the union voted on the raises that we gave." So I didn't get the optic for the people in back. As, as, as long as I have an opportunity to say something, I will say that too, that was kind of a disappointment. Okay, thank you. If he wants to talk, that's fine.
We'll give you a chance, Rick, let me let Vice Minister...
There was, there was a contract that we negotiated with, through the union, not long ago. All parties agreed to it. My belief, my thought, all the issues coming forward, was that other area fire districts had increased their pay, except for Safety Harbor. And that, with individuals leaving, you had five people up here, you had a city manager, you had a chief.
You had a city manager, you had a chief. They were all in our ear, and all five of us sat up here, and we did the right thing. I thought we did the right thing. We didn't negotiate anything. We basically stood up, and we said, "We're gonna do the right thing, because pay is increasing. We need to keep up, we need to be competitive. We're, we're not Palm Harbor, we're not East Lake, we're a small department, but we need to keep up. We don't need to be at the bottom, we need to be mid-range." And so, the five of us sat up here, and you had our ear, and we were very responsive. And it was my thought at that time, based on everything that I heard, that the issue was pay. We didn't hear anything about chief. No one was throwing issues out with fire engines, and not responding to calls, and reducing the number of staff on engines. I mean, none of that came up. And you had our ear at the last meeting, and I can't believe we're spending time and airing differences in public right now. But now, all of a sudden, it's, I guess what we're hearing is, there's an issue with personalities and the chief. And I'm really disappointed that we're airing our differences, and it's not even our differences. I can't believe that you all have come before us to air differences when there was opportunity to, to, no one called me. I, I don't think I've met with anybody from the fire department since the election. I know Ray's got my number. I, I think any of us up here are accessible. We don't have to meet with the head of the union. Anybody can call us up and say, "Hey, look, I need to talk to you. There's some bad stuff going on." I mean, there, there's, there's a hierarchy of who to go to and try to get things done. And if things aren't getting done, and things are that bad, why, why tonight are we hearing? Because initially, it was pay, and tonight, it's the chief. And I'm, I'm disappointed too. I, I, I think because of what's going on, we need to have some more, you know, we're, we're gonna have to bring in someone to figure out what's going on, because we're not getting the true picture of what's going on. And, and I think, I think Mr. Spoor knows that. But to sit here tonight and, and, you know, air differences, I, I just think is the wrong way to go. The five of us are very responsive. There's no need to air your opinions and feelings tonight. You could have called us. I'm disappointed that the union didn't do that. Where's the leadership in the union?
Did I respond to that?
No. I think straight up, straight up, any of us are always available. We love the city, just like you guys, and we love everybody that works for the city. We do. I would just ask that next time there's an issue, I, I, look, I had guys from sanitation a few years ago, reaching out to me, giving me information, and, and I acted on it. I guarantee it. You could have pinpointed anybody up here, gone to them, and there would have been a I, I, I mean, the city's great. I, I've never heard, I've never heard so much negativity about the city until this issue's come up. I just, I can't believe that things are that bad in this city. I'm certainly not hearing it from the public. And the social media, airing things on social media, it's just a disappointment. But nonetheless, I do look forward to working through these issues and getting to the bottom of it, because certainly, you know, all the employees in the city of Safety Harbor, union or non-union, all provide services with a smile to the citizens, and that's what makes this place so great. And so, we do want happy employees. We want to figure out, we want to get to the bottom line and figure this out. But we're certainly not gonna let a few people with some personality conflicts potentially run things and determine what goes on. But certainly, we've responded to the pay issue, and we'll respond to this. But I would suggest, next time, there's a better way to do this. There's a much better way to do this than showing up and airing your grievances at a, at a city commission meeting. And I would just ask, next time there's an issue, reach out to one of us if you're getting nowhere with the chief, or nowhere with Matt. Reach out to one of us. Thank you.
I would just like to say, I don't have really much new items to add. And there was a, an agreement, it was negotiated, based on what our best information was. After that, other information became apparent with other communities, other pay structure. There was a fair amount of negotiation and discussion. I know I was reached out to, I came and sat down and listened. I didn't hear anything specific to any of these other issues. I agree with everyone else up here that, that we value your service, we understand the importance. And so, when there was an issue about maybe an inequity and variations in pay, the difference was 12% versus perhaps 14%, and this was the first good, big chump, chunk of, of money. There were six people leaving. We've had five people already accept, and those five were potentially available at the time when this discussion was being made. Money still came in. Those people still left, they could have re-decided upon, but they left. New people came on. I think it's important that we do continue to discuss this in good faith. The concern with this type of thing is, it potentially can cause bad feelings. And that isn't the type of thing that people need to do when people are dependent upon each other. So, I agree that, and I am surprised that after a week, and after a letter that came out that said, you know, "We understand there's some issues ahead, but we're glad, and we're working together, and we're trying to do this in good faith," I was expecting that those things would be continually discussed. Through social media, I agree, is, is not the place to, to do this kind of thing. It's a much better way to, to have it aired out and negotiate it between the, the appropriate people, to make sure that everything is covered, everything is reviewed, and everything is done. So, I would just hope that, and we will, you know, address this and, and talk about it, but the fact that those things weren't brought up before, this, this can't be the flavor of the month, that every week, come up with some different issue. Then you kind of wonder where the target was initially, where the issue was initially. And we're trying to do the best we can to, to come up with a solution that is best for you all, for the city, for everyone. That's all I have.
Not gonna open up to everyone, but I know the union president's here. You've indicated you'd like a chance to address the commissions.
Hey, good evening. Rick Justice. Also, just to clarify, one thing that caught my attention was, you said Matt Spoor has contacted me and requested a document with all these statements. That's not true. Have not been contacted for that. And to, for the, for the idea that we came in here and we said, "Yeah, this money will keep these guys," that was the hope. I didn't, I didn't have any confirmation from anyone that that was gonna happen. I did, whenever we had discussions, when I said 20%, that would keep people, that was the number. 6% was not the number. So, and, you know, we, that was six weeks ago, when I said 20%. And then, who just left would be here still. So, I'm not gonna remember all the comments, but I would love for you to bring them back up, the comments y'all made, and I can address each one. Mr. Steinhold, I know I hadn't, hadn't reached out to you. And to be honest, you know, I was the vice president last cycle, and we set a meeting up with you, and you didn't show up. I was sitting at the coffee shop for 45 minutes, you did no call, no show. So, that was the reason, like, I haven't been excited to reach out to you. So, that was that. But I'm, I'm willing to build a relationship from here out. So, part of that's on me. Oh, sorry about that. And so...
Just two points. So, one is, it was Andrew Hawkins that reached out to, I don't know if it was you, or Tom Peters, or some other member of the union, to ask for, you know, a list of things that can be addressed on paper. So, maybe there was a communication issue there, but that was happening. But, you know, I just wanna say, we've developed a relationship, we've spoken privately about this. I understand, you know, the union's concerns, and I think all of us want to constructively work with the union moving forward. My question to you is, tonight, can you reaffirm your commitment to be a partner with the city and to act in good faith in a process to resolve these issues?
Absolutely. Yeah, so the union, we put out posts that say, "We're losing, we lost this member, good luck to you." And unfortunately, yeah, we've done four of them recently. We're gonna do another one next week when we lose a guy. It's just, that's what it is. That's, nothing's false in that, that's all true. And what people do with that, beyond that post, that's, that's not the union's decision, that's not our doing. Yeah, people are upset, and other people, like, members of the fire department, past members of the fire department, understand it, they see it, they're upset about it. I'm frustrated about it. I feel like, you know, I've been in several meetings with our fire chief, who, who has been disciplining somebody, and said these words, "I'm holding you accountable," accountability. And so, we're in this moment where we just lost six people. It was not something that came up out of the blue. This, this has been on the horizon for a year. We knew it. And where's the accountability? Is the person who should be running this department, the department head, being held accountable?
All right. So, I mean, you just committed to working through the process, and you're kind of going back in, looking to point fingers...
That is part of the process, I believe, right?
Is, when you say "hold accountable," are you calling for the chief to be replaced?
If that's, if that's holding him accountable, what would you, what would your vision of accountability be in that instance?
I think what the message I'm hearing from all of us is, a process to work through the issues with the chief, not to replace the chief. That's my question. Are you willing to commit in good faith to work through that process, to work through them with the current chief, moving forward?
I'm not gonna speak on that for the moment. I'm not ready to make that commitment.
The only way, Rick, the only way this works is, I mean, coming here and not being able to commit to that very simple question is troubling, to be honest with you. I mean, if we want, if, if we're serious about addressing these issues, then you're kind of holding us hostage, saying, you know, if you can't even commit to that, you're basically trying to hold us hostage. And, you know, and I'm not sure what the, what the other side of it is, with the, if you don't do this, then what? I don't know what the then what is. But, I mean, you guys really need to evaluate, because if this, as I've said publicly, the chief has the backing of the district chiefs, he has the backing of the city manager, the city manager has the backing of the commission. So, he's got plenty of backing. And it doesn't, from what I've heard from everyone up here, we're not, I don't see anyone saying, "Yeah, let's replace the chief." So, we're either willing to work through it with the current chief in good faith, and, you know, address these issues, or, you know, or not.
So, just on that point, the chief has y'all's, are y'all have the chief's back? The city manager has his back. Who has our back? Who has ours? So, I understand...
I haven't heard, number one, I haven't heard specifically, I mean, as we're sitting here airing differences, articulate. When you say he doesn't have your back, he, he's not part of the union. He's the chief. He's, he's, he's overlooked by city manager. He's working with you guys. He's got a budget for equipment, for people. He's putting it all together. When you, when you say he doesn't have your back, I, articulate to us specifically what...
Specifically, one instance where he could have had our back was last commission meeting. He doesn't have to stand up here and argue for money. He doesn't have to say, "You need to pay these guys this amount of money." But he could stand up here and describe what our department looks like, when we lose people operationally, what our department looks like. So, that was his moment to, to have our back, essentially, to stand up, describe our department. It's a small department, we're family, and when we lose six people, it hurts, it hurts. And so, for him to stand up here and describe that would have been huge. That would have been a moment where our guys would have been like, "Man, this guy, he might, he might have our back at some level." And over the last six months, he has, I feel like, been coming after individuals. And, you know, I've heard this, and I didn't hear this firsthand, but I did hear that he is going to bankrupt the union, and that the city has deeper pockets. Meaning, I have an attorney, and I can fight you guys in everything that I choose to. And we've had three or four grievances in the last four months put in place, because he's reading our union contract in a certain way and implementing it, or he wants to read city rules in a certain way and implement it. And so, when we see that, when I see that happen to one of these guys, just like I said, we're a close family, and I feel it, that hurts me. And so, it hurts every single one of us when that happens. So, that's where, that's where this mistrust, this toxic environment that we're living in, that's where that comes from. And, and y'all say, you know, "We should, we should, we should have done this in a different route." So, I've had several conversations with our fire chief. This is, this isn't brand-new information, individual conversations. On 9/11, I talked with Matt Spoor for an hour and a half. This conversation, not the pay conversation, it was about our fire chief, that conversation. Nothing's changed. Nothing's gonna change. And you guys sitting here saying, "I have his back." I, I still fear that nothing is gonna change. You act like we're up here, every meeting, making complaints, when we're not. This, this is probably the first time this has ever happened. I'm not up here crying wolf, I'm not up here making things up.
We're not, I don't think anybody suggested that, but you did make a comment about me not, not showing up for a meeting. In the last meeting we were supposed to have, you called me up and said, "Never mind, we've taken care of it." So, we didn't have a meeting. But the lines or the communication was still open with myself. But I, I, I just, again, I, I think there's a lot of work to be done. I, I don't know where this is gonna go. It's unfortunate that this is all taking place at a city commission meeting. And, and yes, it feels like it's every meeting, because we were just here at the last meeting, and we addressed what we thought was the issue, which was salary. And, and the issue with the chief didn't come up at the last meeting, never came up. We weren't called. I don't think anybody up here was called and told, "Hey, there's, there's an issue," until last day or so, when we started getting information about the post on, 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 uh, social media. But it, it is disappointing, Rick, it really is. I'm, I'm sorry we're having this conversation. I really am. I truly am.
I mean, I thought, I mean, I've been talking to you all for three, four years, and I, I think we, we created a relationship where you can be open about things, and I, I feel comfortable talking to you guys.
Yeah.
You know, I, I mean, and I, I talk to you guys comfortably, because I believe you feel comfortable with me. And you guys never mentioned anything about this, this, this cultural, this problem, you know, this, this harassment by the chief. I mean, it, it sounds pretty bad. But I also talked to some of the guys that left, right?
Yep.
And, yeah, like anything else, they, they got issues, they, they got, but they, they were, it wasn't the chief, it wasn't the chief, it was other issues. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna comment them here. I don't, you know, we're not, you know, we could go offline, we could talk, have a cup of coffee or whatever, or beer, and, and discuss it there, you know? But there, there's, there's other issues there. It's not just that. And, and, and it's not, you know what, and it's not even, in my belief, I think everybody's got a little, a little bit of a problem here, right? And there's some, there's some problems from the outside that's also affecting, right? The past, the past is also, is also affecting what's happening today. And neither one of you all had any kind of thing to do with the past. Anyway, I don't, I don't wanna, I really don't wanna go any more deeper than that or anything like that. But, but we need to recognize, because the whole thing is, is that if we just start throwing stuff, you know, things out there, right, and we don't actually address the true problem, that problem is gonna resurface every time, right? Then you guys are gonna be up here every week.
Yeah. I don't wanna be here.
So, so, you know, we have to address the actual problem. You know, we can't just be, you know, doing this, doing that, you know?
And just to, to speak on, you know, why didn't we bring this up last meeting, or why haven't we been talking about this? The number one issue, or one of the, the major issue, was that, that pay, that compensation. And so, the, the idea was, let's get that first, let's go for that, because if we, if we had both these conversations at the same time, they would have never, they would have never been, you know, hand in hand. We would have never figured everything out. So, one thing first, that was the hope to keep the majority of those guys. You know, two of those six guys left specifically from the fire chief. That was their cause, that was the reason they left, two of six. So, that is the issue that we're here to address right now. And, and I feel like, you know, this is our last avenue. I feel like, you know, we've had conversations, and it's just going nowhere. So, yeah, I'm not, I'm not excited to be in the moment right here and talking about it in, you know, in public, but unfortunately, we feel like we have no other avenue.
I'd like to speak to Rick about chief and the whole money issue, the whole negotiation. I know Mr. Spoor worked on the pay, the, the suggestions to us of what we could do. I didn't come up with that, I don't... I didn't come up with that, I don't think any of us did, I think chief worked on that with Mr. Spoor.
Which part?
The part about the percent, the cost of living increase now, and then the cost of living increase in March, I think those two were instrumental, those two managers, our city manager and the fire chief. I believe that you passed information about other departments and what the pay was, et cetera, you've, you've done the comparables, I guess you'd call it, and showed us where we were, and made it stark. And, that was our information, but it came from those individuals, so, in a sense, I felt he had your back. And personally, I would have felt strange, again, if the chief had stood up there, back there and said, "Yeah, yeah," because I would have thought, "Chief, you brought this to us, you, you negotiated this."
Yeah, so-
Of course we were gonna support, of course we're listening, so why would he, "Yeah, yeah" us, when we were with him, we, we had you, I thought, we really had your back, I was really happy. I was so happy.
Yeah, I'm glad that we were able to come to that agreement.
But, no, that was very sad, as I was just thinking.
And so, just on that point, yeah, that three and three was not the fire chief's conversation, that was Matt not having that conversation. So I'm, I'm sure he had a part in, you know, that, so I'm not dismissing that. But, on the other, on the other half, just think about this, the chief in Madeira Beach got with the commissioners, got with the city manager, a couple of months ago, and was like, "Hey, my guys are underpaid." This is the fire chief having this conversation, he sees it, "My guys are underpaid, we need to do something." Commissioners, the fire chief and city manager come to the fireman like, "Hey, we wanna give you guys fifteen percent across the board right now, you understand where you're at, let's make it right." And that was the fire chief doing that, that wasn't the union fighting for that, that's how that was handled. And that would be unheard of in, in our moment right here.
Rick, though, you can't have it both ways, because at one point, you're, you know, the union takes pride in acting as its kind of own separate unit, in negotiating the contracts, which the chief did not negotiate on your behalf, the union negotiated the contract. The, in all this, in all the defense, in our defense, even if the city chief, or the, the fire chief said, "Yeah, we should give him raises," the city commission is not allowed to give a bonus or a raise to the union members unless the union approves it. So even if he were to do that, the, the union could say, "No," as was evidenced when I asked you the question last meeting, "What if we only committed to the three percent, and we waited on the other three percent, and you said, 'No, we will stick with the contract.'"
Yep.
Which I was like, kind of scratching my head, saying, "Well, what, you take nothing over," but that's another point. But the point is, that, I don't know if it was his role, because you guys negotiated your contract. So it's like, I, I feel like any, like honestly, that right now, it feels like anything he does, he's getting, you know, you guys are going after him, he didn't, he didn't speak up on your behalf. But we, when we were speaking, I said, "Did you communicate to him that you'd like him to speak up on your behalf?" "No," "Well, but he should have known, he should have read the room," is what you told me. And then I said, "Well, what if he did speak up and he said, you sort of talk in numbers," he said, "Well, no, we wouldn't want him to speak numbers, we would have had him to just have our back." So he's kind of like in a box, like, if he said the wrong thing, then you'd get, then, you know, you'd hold that against him, it was like, honestly, it feels like every avenue, it's like, honestly, the wrong thing, and I'm hearing, I've talked to several union members. I talked to some of the people that left, I've heard, you know, FMLA issues, I've heard the issue about, you know, Ray Duke mentioned something about, somebody, you know, a, a call, a cardiac call for a pediatric person. And I've looked into these things, and there's another side, and it's just maybe the case that on some of this, the fire chief has information that the union doesn't, and to be second guessed on every decision he makes, is counterproductive. At some point, it's like, you guys gotta stick your heads down, do your job, and trust that he's working for the, the best of the, the whole entire city, including the union.
Yeah, that's just not the case, though, he's not doing that.
Okay. But I, I-
And, so, I mean, I can go into details on these, this FMLA, these other issues.
I, I don't think this is the place, I mean, that's a, we can't speak about-
There's no other side to that story, it's just-
No, I've heard a totally other side of that story, I was speaking-
The law is the law, and that's what we wanted to be followed.
Okay. And I just, we'll try to wrap things up, I'll make a couple of quick comments, and then we'll try to move on. I've heard a lot of comments, I've heard this but not firsthand, not just from you, but from other people. It's like, it's like almost this kind of gossip mill going on, and like, people like, the phone booth and thing, you know, I, I heard it, but I didn't hear it myself, every time I ask someone, "Did you hear them say it?" "No, someone else told me he said it." So it's like, I'm wondering what's going on with this, you know, this communication system where no one's hearing things, but it's always someone else that heard something, that's a concern of mine. You know, you talk about the social media posters, another person leaving, you're gonna be doing a post, I mentioned to you, like, "I'm reading these posts, and they're very nice," I said, "They read like, they read like obituaries," like, I'm like, "Did the guy die?" Like, I mean, it's like, very, you know, it's, I know it's sad, I just, I would just ask you that, when the new people come on, that you'd be as welcoming to them in your social media posts?
Ooh, we had that conversation today.
Good, good. And, you know, just last, I mean, I know you wouldn't commit, but I just, you know, I'd just ask you to please be open to a process to resolve these issues and working in good faith, because I think that's probably the best way that these are gonna get resolved. Thank you. I think, we gotta, sorry, this is, we're just kind of out of it, but we'll, we can talk offline if you like. Alright, so moving on to the consent agenda, we have two items, first one's approval of the November sixth meeting minutes. Second, approval of purchase of two Ford Transit high roof passenger vans for fifty-five thousand each from Bozard Ford, does anyone wanna pull any of these? Okay, is, we have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero, next up, public hearings, first one, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash eleven on first reading.
Thank you, Mayor, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash eleven, an ordinance of the city of Safety Harbor, Florida, providing for the zoning designation of recently annexed property, twenty twenty-three dash forty-six AN slash ZO, located at three 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 nine Irwin Street East, Safety Harbor, Florida. Binding the request consistent with the review standards of section two-two-six-point-oh-three of the Safety Harbor Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, and providing for an effective date. Mayor and commissioners, this has been a reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash eleven on first reading by title only.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, um, so-
Cecilia, anyone else who wants to speak sworn in?
Right, for the record, Cecilia Chen, community planner, GIS analyst. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, before you is a zoning assignment item after annexation. So this property at three 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 nine Irwin Street East has recently been annexed in the city on October the sixteenth. So now, this is the zoning assignment following the annexation, because it does not have a city zoning designation yet. So here's an aerial map of the property, and here's a photo of this property. This property is point-two-five acres, is currently developed with one single family detached dwelling, it's currently just been incorporated into the city, it does not have a zoning yet, and the future land use designation is residential low. So the surrounding zonings are RS sixty to northeast and west, and to the south is PDD, which is a site plane controlled development area. Staff believe that the most appropriate zoning designation for this property is RS sixty to be consistent with the surrounding properties. So RS sixty is a typical single-family residential district, and the permitted uses are single-family detached dwellings, public education facilities, distribution, electric substations, and community gardens. Unconditional uses, which requires city commission approval, and then the applicant need to bring a conditional use if they want any of these following items. Including parks, churches, daycare centers, community residential homes, light utility service, libraries, museums, et cetera, and social public service agencies. These are the RS sixty dimensional regulations, staff believe that it's compatible with the current use and surrounding uses. On November the eighth, planning and zoning board heard this item and unanimously recommended the city commission adopt the variance, uh, adopt the ordinance, sorry. But tonight, the city commission may approve or deny ordinance number twenty twenty-three eleven on first reading, thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia. Is the applicant here? No, okay, so we can skip a lot of these steps, so. We need to check for any intervening parties?
I would recommend that we do that, would you like me to explain to the audience?
Sure.
If there's anyone here who is not the applicant or the city who would like to come and represent their own interest before the commission tonight regarding this property, please come forward and make yourselves known. In order to qualify as an intervening party, you need to have a higher interest in this property than the community at large. Some examples would be owning or running, owning property or running a business within five hundred feet of the subject property. Is there anyone here who would like to be considered a intervening party? Seeing none, we can move forward, thank you.
Again, I'm just gonna ask the commission if anyone's had any communications with the applicant regarding this, you know?
No.
Neither of y'all, okay. Alright, so we've gone through all that, any questions or comments from the commission? Alright, anyone from the audience which should be heard on this item? Alright, do we have a motion?
Move approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-three hyphen eleven on first reading.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero, next up is resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six.
I believe there are two resolutions, would you like me to read?
Oh, yeah, sorry, twenty twenty-three, twenty-five, and twenty-six, sorry.
Would you like me to read both at this time, Mayor?
Sure, thank you.
Very good. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Safety Harbor, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year commencing October one, twenty twenty-two, and ending September thirty, twenty twenty-three, by allocating fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three project carryforwards into the fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four budget, by appropriating revenues and expenditures within the general fund, stormwater, street improvement, marina, capital project, water and wastewater sanitation, water and wastewater renewal and replacement, and community redevelopment agency, CRA, and corresponding increases in fund reserves, providing for publication in accordance with the requirements of law, and providing for an effective date. Mayor and commissioners, this has been a reading of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five on first and only reading by title only. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Safety Harbor, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year commencing October one, twenty twenty-three, and ending September thirty, twenty twenty-four, by allocating fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three project carryforwards into the fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four budget, by appropriating revenues and expenditures within the general fund, stormwater, street improvement, marina, capital project, water and wastewater, sanitation, water and wastewater renewal, and replacement, and community redevelopment agency, CRA, and corresponding increases in fund reserves, providing for publication in accordance with the requirements of law, and providing for an effective date. Mayor and commissioners, this has been a reading of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six by title only on first and only reading.
Thank you, Matt.
Good evening, I need exist to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budgets for project carryforwards in both fiscal years. Purchase orders or encumbrances in place were carried forward from September thirty, twenty twenty-three to October first, twenty twenty-three, totaling ten million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one. In addition, staff identified projects not yet started, or that were in progress, but not moved forward during the budget process, and needed to be carried forward to fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Projects identified, total nine million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven. Essentially, what we're doing is decreasing fiscal year twenty-three with the dash twenty-five resolution, and then increasing twenty-four with the dash twenty-six resolution, for projects outside the encumbrances that were identified by ordinance, and we're here to opinion questions.
Thank you, any questions? Do you need two motions, or can we do it in one motion?
I believe you can do it in one motion.
Anyone wish to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Uh, hold on a second, anyone from the audience which should be heard on this item? Alright, sorry.
I make a motion to adopt budget resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five, and budget resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero, alright, so next up is the proposed charter amendments, we have a ordinance on that, Izzy?
Thank you, Mayor, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh-six, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Safety Harbor, Florida, submitting to the city electors a proposed amended charter which amends section five regarding review of the charter and ordinances, amend section nine regarding gender neutrality, create section nine regarding Baranoff Park, amend section nineteen regarding commission vacancies, amend section twenty-one regarding appointment of vice mayor, amend section twenty-five regarding special commission meetings, amend section thirty-three regarding procedure for filing petitions, amend section fifty-four regarding candidate qualifying statement, submitting to the city electors such proposed amendments to the, to the charter, including amending the ordinance review process to require the city manager to present proposed changes to city ordinances annually, providing of the words "he and his apply to all natural persons regardless of the subjective gender identification," requiring referendum vote for any transfer or land use change of Baranoff Park, requiring that commission vacancies be appointed from a pool of applicants, requiring a vice mayor to be appointed no later than the last day of March in absence of an election, extending the number of hours required for written notice of special commission meetings, extending the number of days in which notice of intention to amend an initiative petition certified insufficient for lack of signatures must be given, amending the candidate qualifying period, providing for publication in accordance with the requirements of law, providing for a citywide referendum election to be held in conjunction with the regular election on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and providing for an effective date. Mayor and commissioners, this has been a reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh-six by title only on first reading. I'm primarily going to be presenting on this with a little bit of Rachel's help, so this is the third time that this, these proposed charter amendments have come before you. You may remember that the Charter Review Committee came before you and presented a final report on October sixteenth, and suggested certain changes. I'm happy to walk through the amendments with you, we can put them on the projector, I think that you, you've seen the amendments before. The cross and strike-through and underline language can be found on pages two to five, and also the ballot language that will be placed on the ballot for the referendum election can be found on pages five through eight. Would you want to go through each change itself, or I know that you've discussed these before?
I'm okay, unless anyone else wants to go through them in detail?
I'm okay.
I have something to say about one, but I don't need to go through them in detail, just when it's time to speak, let me know.
I'm gonna speak.
Okay, I have changed my mind about term limits, and earlier this week, I would have thought the universe would have had frozen for me to have made this pronouncement, because I got a politically motivated email, essentially, "I will get you and your little dog Toto too, you're just a threat, you change your mind," or, and I thought, "Wow, this is why experience is needed in a position like this, this is why a person has to serve a while, so that this type of pressure does not affect her." However, I've been losing sleep and thinking not only just about fire, but I've also been thinking about this issue. And although I personally think that it's absurd for me, who's running for my seventh time, to say term limits are great, I feel it hypocritical, I also have listened to numerous residents who have been hammering me, saying, "You don't get to decide, you got to decide when you left to run for mayor and got clobbered, but you don't get to decide for me about term limits, I want to decide, I want to vote about it." And I just then got another email, which we all did, about what the state legislature is proposing to do to county commissions. And I believe, if I, I read it fast, but I believe they're trying to force county commissions to have term limits from Tallahassee, no less. And I was just livid, and I thought, "How dare they try to preempt on this issue, too." But then I had to look at myself the last couple of days and say, "That's what I want to do to the voters, I want to preempt their chance to address this issue at a referendum." So, who am I, on my high horse telling, telling, "Hassie, back off," and then, I'm telling the residents that I know best. So, I've been your voice, your choice, and now, what am I gonna do, change my slogan in Nancy Knows Best, I can't. So I apologize, commissioners, I know we've been through this three times, but if I vote no on the ordinance, it's because of that, I've changed my mind on term limits, I think the voters should vote on them. So thank you for listening to me.
Anyone from the audience which should be heard on this item? Anyone wish to make a motion?
And I'm gonna be voting against this, because I think, last meeting, the meeting before that, whether I'm for or against term limits, we, we enlisted Charter Review Committee to kind of, and we picked people from the community to give us input. And, I, you know, whether you wanna change the language from what they proposed, I, I honestly think that, you know, I think the general public out there would like to see some term limits, whether you limit it to three terms, two terms, a specific seat, whatever, I just think that we should put it on the ballot for- Um, I just think that we should, um, put it on, uh, the ballot, uh, for the residents to make that decision. Again, I, I know there's an argument with, hey, they'll make that decision if they don't reelect you, this and that. Um, but I still think that, um, the charter review committee, uh, part of the general public gave us insight, proposed those changes, so, uh, I'll just voice my opposition, um, to the vote, um, based on the fact that we're leaving out, uh, term limits from the proposed ballot language, so.
All right, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh-six on first reading, opposing amendments to the city charter and calling for referendum election to submit the proposed city charter changes to the citizens for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Okay, so motion passes three to two. Um, moving on, selection of a grand parade marshal for the twenty twenty-three holiday parade.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. On November seventh, twenty twenty-three, an email was distributed to the city commission and staff requesting suggestions and nominations for the grand marshal for the upcoming twenty twenty-three holiday parade. Suggestions and nominations received to date include, and I do apologize if I, um, don't pronounce a name right, Dan Margiononi and Claire Cousins, who are Kiwanians, Chris Sauger from Haberdish, the Safety Harbor Little League, which would be the entire league, however, the president would be in, um, would, would be representing at tree lighting if selected, Don Hanley out of Speak Up Mental Health Program founder, uh, Robert Hempel, who is an outstanding community member and volunteer, and Tiffany Sneeden, who is a middle school teacher and thespian troop advisor. Uh, in your backup documentation, I did provide the history of the past parade marshals. So tonight, staff is seeking selection of the twenty twenty-three grand parade marshal from the city commission to provide adequate time for introduction at the tree lighting ceremony and the holiday parade participation. As a reminder, tree lighting is on Friday, December first, at six o'clock, and the holiday parade is on Saturday, December second, at ten.
I also said Mr. Margiononi's name.
Okay.
Just the way we said it for ages.
Okay.
But it is, it's, uh, Dan Margiononi. And, uh, I really want to compliment the entire commission on these choices. This is just tough, because these are people who love Safety Harbor, all. Um, I want to, um, say that I think, well, I did put forth Dan and Claire, um, I would also be willing to have a group of people, um, as we have done in the past. Um, I was thinking that I'd be perfectly fine having, um, uh, more than just the representatives that I suggested. Some of them very logically fit together for what they do for kids. They all do things for kids, but, uh, several of the other individuals, um, do a whole lot for the students in our community. And it's, I just think choosing this year is going to be horrendously difficult, but I think Dan is a very positive force in the community, and Claire Cousins is behind the scenes. She does things for various programs and indeed has produced in this, been producing the snacks for the Maddie Williams benefits for years and years more than I can count on her own dime, just produces them and presents them. So I suspect kind of quiet behind the scenes person that I just truly, truly admire and love. But as I said, I'm open to having more than my choices. My choice was Dan Margiononi and Claire Cousins.
My choice would be Bob Hempel, just because I've, I know that he is a guy who's, he's with the kids, he cares about the kids, uh, he's, he's been doing it for years, years. And I just know that he cares about everyone in this community, and he's got a big heart. And I, I just, uh, his name doesn't come up often, um, but I know ever, ever since I've been involved with the city, um, even before, when my kids were involved in a lot of stuff around the city, uh, Bob was always there. Um, so that would be my choice is Bob. I like-
Or let's go with the Little League, just because I, I just think that would be just a, a great scene. It's a great scene, just imagine, all these kids.
Well, they said it would just be the president.
What's that?
He said it would just be the president.
Yeah, but in, in the parade, in the, on the Christmas parade, you know.
I think it's a, it sounds to me like it's going to be a big group of kids and adults.
I'm sure the league will be in the parade regardless, whether the grand marshal or not.
When I looked at the list, and you're right, it's, it's very difficult because there's some fantastic people here. Claire popped out. I, I've known her for years. When my kids were young, she was actively involved, and she's done many, many things since then. And, and I also, uh, Bob Hempel is another one that I've, I've seen and looked at and, and dealt with for years and years. So I don't know if, if we have the option of two, um, those two would be what I would, what I would pick. Otherwise, I probably would go with Claire.
Anyone from the audience wish to be heard? Anyone want to take a stab at a motion?
I'd like to move that we take Commissioner Merza's suggestion and have three. I think that's what I'm hearing, have Dan and Claire and Bob.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero, so.
Thank you.
Cool. All right. Um, next up, Rachel, this is for you, the Board of Trustees for Firefighters Pension Trust Fund.
Thank you, Mayor. The term of Edmund Ziegler will expire this month, and he has requested reappointment. There are no alternates on this board. He has missed one meeting. Three applications have been received. It is requested that the city commission appoint one regular member to the board.
I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
I'd like to move to reappoint Mr. Ziegler.
Second. Anyone from the audience which should be heard? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Now we're looking for a diversity advisory board member.
Ms. Erin Linehan has resigned from the DAB. There are no alternates to this board. Two applications have been received. It is requested that the commission appoint one regular member to the diversity advisory board.
Wasn't, uh, Erin Linehan, wasn't she just appointed? Just recently?
Oh, I think she, yeah, I'm sorry. I think she did.
Make a motion to appoint Autumn Pearson.
I'll second.
Anyone from the audience which should be heard? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Moving on to commission reports, Vice Mayor.
Yes, just, uh, want to wish, uh, Commissioner Merza a happy birthday.
Thank you.
And, uh, I don't know if we need to sing happy birthday or not, but, uh, happy birthday. It won't humiliate you.
Yeah, you, you don't have to. It's okay.
I was told I was supposed to lead in this, in the happy birthday song, so.
Who's supposed to lead?
Yeah.
I was directed by-
Oh, you.
Yes, I was supposed to lead.
We are going to sing this.
Yes.
They won't chime in, so that's good.
Ready? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
And then he might be told. Whoever helped put the balloons that were behind my chair when I came in, thank you very much, but I removed them. Oh. Thank you, though.
You're wearing an ugly sweater coming out. You can keep wearing it.
I'm going back with the ugly sweater.
And, uh, just want to say, third Friday again, another great night here in Safety Harbor. It just seems like we just, uh, keep expanding, so, uh, I think we're doing something right here. Um, and lastly, happy Thanksgiving. I'll keep it short. Thank you.
Commissioner Besore?
Yes, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and I'm looking forward to seeing everybody at the tree lighting. And thank you, Commissioners, for your lovely choices, although I have to say, I typed to Andrea, "Has anybody made any choices yet?" I was really hopeful that you would have all forgotten. It worked. Pardon? For the parade motion, I was surprised. She had said she didn't have anybody by X-day, and I thought, oh, maybe. But anyway, I'll thank you all for the wonderful suggestions and see you all at the tree lighting as well as at the parade. And that's my-
Commissioner Diaz?
How much is happy Thanksgiving and, uh, see you guys at the parade and, uh, the tree lighting.
We do have one more meeting before the holidays.
I don't think so.
December fourth.
Nope.
Summer second.
Tree lighting's the first.
Oh, okay, so this is appropriate time to say all this. All right.
It's the report.
All right.
You checking me?
Well, no, I was, I looked at my calendar, I must have missed it, because I was like, what? Hey, back. Um, Commissioner Merza?
Thank you. Yes, uh, wish, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Yes, the, uh, holiday parade is at ten o'clock on Saturday, December second. Tree lighting was mentioned, it's at six PM on Friday, December first.